All right, good evening. Today is Monday, April eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. I will not call the City Council and Planning and Zoning Commission. Join special meeting to order at five thirty-one PM. Item number two, our roll call council. We have a quorum of city council that's here. Mr. Weiss, chair, please certify that you have a quorum on the Planning and Zoning Commission that's present?
We do have a quorum.
Okay, so we have a quorum on both. Item number three are public comments. City Secretary, do you have any public comment requests?
Yes, Mr. Williams, do. Chris Martinez. Mr. Martinez, if you can state your name and address for the record and also please adhere to the three-minute time limit.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Martinez. I'm a, I'm the. H O A at the State Silver Ridge. There was a agenda item on this about some litigation for a proposed development that is being done near our community. The only reason that we're here, and we're not going to take too much of your time. There's other, other venues for us to do this. And while we do have other people that are going to speak, the one thing that I want to. And we've, we've already spoken to the Planning and Zoning Commission on this particular issue. But the, the most important thing that we want to make sure is evident to city council and all the members of the city staff is that we would request that this process is as transparent as it possibly can be. We, we want to make sure that there's a good faith effort between our HOA and the city. Obviously, with the development that's coming up, we don't agree with it. We don't like it. We don't want it near our community. We don't think it's a, a benefit to the community. There are people on city council that have a different opinion, which we can understand. There's always different opinions. We're all professionals. We can listen to two sides of a coin and we can try to come up with a compromise. But we caution city council and the city to be as transparent or extra transparent in this transaction because it's a very sensitive subject. And it's a sensitive subject because we're talking about our homes. We're talking about our homes and with a risk of a development that could alter the value of our homes and take money out of our pockets. We don't know which way this is going to go.
I feel we can all hear ourselves. Should we?
I turn it off. So, so what I want to say is just, it's money that comes out of our homes. Everyone's the latest source of income and wealth in New York. And so, we want to make sure that it's actually transparent. We don't want to do anything that we don't know. So there is also, it could go both ways. It could be something that could damage our families, damage our, our, our patients. If they weren't, they should bet us. We don't know. But what we do know is that we're finally enjoying our future. And we need to make sure there's a reason why people purchase their homes where they are. There's a reason why our families have had a wonderful future over the past few years because it's a desire up here. We want to protect that. So my only, my only comment to you is, if you're here to work, people, is just want to be safe. We want to be all, every aspect of this because I think it benefits everyone if it comes to a compromise. And I appreciate it. We're not going to say all the time there's going to be other things you should do. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll call up the next few people if you can please stand in the line. Kidra Derrick. I can't tell what the first name is, but Cumberland. Lindsey Wright. Ms. Derrick? Please state your name and address and adhere to the three-minute time limit. And adhere to the three-minute time limit.
Hi, I'm here with my name is right here. I live at four hundred and fifty-five, I'm in Missouri City in the State of Silver Ridge. I am here to discuss my concerns about the proposed development that is going to, well, that is planning, that is in the planning, taking place in literally my backyard. I'm a resident. I'm born and raised in Mossy. I grew up here, went to high school here, went off to college and medical school, residency to other states. But then after seven years, I decided to bring it back to Mossy. And I didn't move to Lingle, that's a place that I want back to Mossy because that's where I come from, where I grew. And I have a lot of friends. I moved to Silver Ridge because it allowed me to have an opportunity to raise her in a neighborhood I love as well as have a place where to play and go outside and make friends where it's safe and fair. I love this state and I love the treasures and gems right there in Missouri City. And when I heard about the proposals to tear down the fort that I, that my home, other neighbors' homes, uh, with the old hotel, cottages, public parks, hidden spaces. I wanted to just come into a voice that I think that Mossy is a, a residence. I think that, you know, being, you know, forty-one years old, being here for forty-one years, I think that we could do better for ourselves. There's so much land in Mossy. There's all of these six, seven farms. There's so many other places to build up. I'm just kind of concerned and battle, I'm writing on the comments of our chat jar. We do it where we are trying to raise our families safely in the environment that can produce the next leaders that can come here and come back to Missouri City and report to what all of Missouri City has to do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm the city of Lingle. Before we follow them through this, um, here are our elected members, Mayor, city council members, meeting, and all the team members. Thank you for your participation. I'm Melissa in the general and we begin with time on the time is very short. I'm here today because this is a very important event for all of us who leads around this project. That's proposed, not just Silver Ridge, but all the other neighbors, I don't know who's serious. But I want to really highlight that you all get a lot of concerns, a lot of issues that we all have common face in the future. You know, the hope, the hope that it's being decreased, decreased. All of the patients, you don't know. But I want to just say this one thing, during this process, all the families, uh, we are doing a lot of special. We are meeting every day, you know, I, we are speaking about every day, how this will work out, how this will be. Who just actually came in, I wasn't just maybe a group, uh, little over a year ago. However, we'll be in Missouri City and past years and, uh, we got a question, probably in Missouri City. If you're in Missouri City, we'll be here, we'll be missing here. And we're going to be here because we feel like we're fully new, uh, residential, growing area. We change here, we're watching growing here. It is beautiful, peaceful. However, this was shopping class because it's kind of changing our view. I mean, looking at it, not just the neighbors, our street, you are selected to be one of us and protect us. And you trust in me and you consider everything my husband mentions of you. It's important. That's what makes me feel great coming out of it. We don't have the ingredients. But please understand, this is very stressful for us. And during this period, please be open to us, share with us whatever you can. And we'll try to understand you, but, um, all honesty when we make the decisions. Thank you very much.
Hi, Lindsey Wright, forty-six, I speak my mind. I actually wrote it down, you know, it's, it's terrible a lot. But I did want to say that I have a request from my sister, our sister, which is to love it. And when I come home, my husband and I, we, on the way over to the rest of this, actually, we're calling to meet my family. First of all, thank you for allowing me to talk to you here at State Silver Ridge and since regarding that, hopefully, you can get out here. Just kind of to hear a bit about how I've been, I've been in the States for over, for the past three years with our two nephews. As many of you have probably already seen, I sent this to the council, uh, to the mayor, an email regarding this matter. We actually moved some nights, a little over three years ago. And shortly after that, there was actually a construction brutality and we enrolled some dogs in the middle of the day. Right in front of the hospital, we used to live. I think you can all agree that it should be cleared immediately for my health and my children's health. Again, I don't want to be a terrible parent in my email, but I did want to ask a few other concerns and questions that I have that I would still all consider before I make this final statement, obviously. First of all, the developer had told us that they had decided to propose that swimming venue there. We had our initial HOA call with the developer. They mentioned that the event can do a monthly service for this wedding. And so my question to you all is, do we know if marketing research has actually been done off of this market audience? Is that at least looking at the new year or a personal work for some? A female in marketing, I would have a really hard time trying to find a site that's, uh, selling this venue as being a space to get married. The ball first by ten men, uh, who we have a castle wedding. These women are actually more of a violence issue. Whether that's getting married and I'm interested in that because I have to say that I could, like, somebody has been here. I would consider it a non-hereditary, I guess. I would actually want my next door or closer, that may fall in a measure of things. It's one of, it's one of those, we're supposed to get our support today. They want to find a place to do a best probably, I'm just, I feel shopping and making a promise. I don't want to be wrong for all my neighbors, but I would think we're all seeing that that space is a privilege, quiet people. But that's a huge accomplishment. But that is what I'm at right now is, uh, we showed, I know I'm actually in Missouri City and such. I brought a sugar man, I was a dealer in that and keyboard Jason. But we wanted to get away from the city. And so we chose the Missouri City, which is a place that is silverish. We're looking at the internet, which does not do. But this is where we just have that peaceful vibe. We both, my husband and I, both work in leagues in, uh, and I've worked always at the girl's house. I have communication sports games, sports events we attend. I say that, I say that the brotherhood of our family is set here in Missouri City. And we have a good achievement, Jerry, one of our church, uh, our things are involved in multiple areas of sports.
Ma'am, that does conclude your time. Lisa K., Jessica Blue, Damishi A. If you can please come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Lucy Kadju. I live at forty-seventh and Creek Point Lane in the State of Silver Ridge. Thank you guys for hearing us tonight. My family and I chose to move here because of the reputation of the state wealth and community and for the top-notch schools. We left our previous neighborhood on the west side of Houston due to the trauma caused by flooding during hurricane Harvey and concerns. However, we are now concerned about the sudden change in zones from rural housing to commercial and the safety of the four new projects. It seems less like the pop plan, looking at the tier four, and more like decision-driven by specialists. Sex trafficking is often dismissed as an extreme kind of issue. I hear a lot of other parents who are not aware of this. Talking concern that I have, people from my self, I can find that there are some, uh, some concerns.
So with that, I want to thank you for your time. Thank you to council members and my colleagues who are here today and to our city staff who committed their time to come in and talk about, you know, some of the items. Okay? So thank you. So with that, we'll move on to item four eight two, which is to review charter requirements for planning and zoning. We have Jennifer Thomas Gomez who will go into that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm just going to give you just some context as to the role of the Commission and the role of the Commission as the Commission works with the Council. So the Missouri City Charter Code of Ordinances sets establishes the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Commission is really charged with assisting the Council in areas concerning land use. So specifically, the Commission has been created to be your connection to provide recommendations to amend the comprehensive plan, create the comprehensive plan, and monitor the implementation of that comprehensive plan. The Commission works with dedicated staff, professional staff, land use planners, engineers, economic development, legal, in order to bring baseline information to help them in their advisory capacity for to the Council. This is just to give you that broad perspective again, that there's a role for our elected officials in City Council, and then there is a role of, you know, for your Planning and Zoning Commission. And primarily because planning and zoning throughout the history of our country originally was considered a back office. You had professional people stuck up in our office, whether it was New York or any other city, that made decisions that had real impacts on the community's development, business development. So the Planning and Zoning Commission is a tool that communities can use to connect to that citizen's input, get that, achieve that citizen's input, be able to incorporate that. As the Commission, a group of citizens, taxpayers within the community are able to give you all that feedback in your role as the policymakers to establish the laws that are then implemented. I want to kind of transition to the comprehensive plan and the adopted comprehensive plan for the purpose of this discussion to show you that your comprehensive plan that you have in place is still talking about the things that you're talking about today. And so and that's where your Commission, in the role that they play, are looking at some of the major themes from the previous adoption of the comprehensive plan. The diversity of our tax base, diversifying our land use, opportunities for redevelopment. That plan took those those concepts, those major concepts, and applied it to four commercial corridors. And so the plan itself speaks to policy guidance to interpret, to implement on four major commercial corridors. Over the last couple of years, we've expanded that. So that's part of where your comprehensive plan for your Commission for staff need to reevaluate and reconsider. This is just a slide to show some of the strategic priorities that a council has articulated over the last year and how they measure with goals that are established in the existing plan. And so I won't go into full detail on this. I know there's a lot of words on the screen, but over the course of this conversation, it's understanding kind of what we have in place today and then all of the other tools and measures that we have in place to understand kind of how the Commission, how the Council can work together as we make decisions for the future of the community. And then lastly, I want to leave you all with, on the character district side, we've talked a lot about our urban development. We're talking a lot about vertical construction, vertical, you know, kind of that place making for more urban types of development. And our comprehensive plan does reflect on that and provides a character district for that. However, what needs to be evaluated are the appropriate locations. So you have a future land use plan that identifies where certain character districts, where certain types of land use should be established, and it may be time to reevaluate that to make sure that it's consistent with the current priorities and current direction that this council wants to implement. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Herman to discuss a little bit about our land availability.
Good evening. So when we think about Missouri City and we think about where we're going, we want to look at and be cognizant of what we have left in inventory of land. And so when we look at land for sale, there are about forty parcels out for sale right now that are green space land, but there's over four hundred and thirty-seven parcels that are still in inventory. And what I mean and differentiate between the two, forty of them are for sale, the other three hundred and ninety are available to be sold, but they're not for sale. So they may just be someone holding it for a period of time, and a lot of these deals are done with land that's not for sale. So a lot of times, we have to call people that don't have land for sale and ask, or developers will call them and ask to see if they're if they're willing to sell land and so forth. So we try to keep track of all these parcels of land because we want to be able to do the best use for the citizens of Missouri City. So what we look at, and then the second thing we do in economic development is, pretty much, we haven't had a robust economic development department in Missouri City. So what we want to make sure that we do is take the stakeholders in mind. We want to make sure that whatever does come in, we're trying to steer a little bit because, you know, as in Houston, there is no planning and zoning. Developers come in, they build what they want. As they come into the city, that's one of the first things that we face is like, what? Do you have to go through a planning and zoning? And it's like, yes. And so a lot of, a lot of times, we have to make sure that they understand the process, understand what our land use plan, what we want, what our appetite is, because they automatically just assume that they can do, you know, what they want. So it's about trying to steer that ship. This is the corridor that's very hot right now. It's very attractive, which is Fort Ben Toll Road and Highway six. We have a lot of land that's already been sold and has proposed development on it, like your Fort Ben Town Center three that everybody's been talking about with multifamily and retail. They haven't completely disclosed their final footprint for it yet. They've got some conceptual models out there, metro parking garage, which is already broken ground. And then there's a lot of infrastructure and south of there with expansion of road that has been waited for to see what other type of development can be done. And then on the corridor above Fort Ben Toll Road, we've got the, some multifamily coming in and some commercial frontage right along Fort Ben Town Center two, Fort Ben Town Center one. Fort Ben Town Center two has been so popular, they're looking for another pad site. They talked to me about that about two weeks ago. They're looking to create another pad site because they're all pretty much fully occupied at this point. And then along the corridors north, we're in talks with the land developers to see about bringing purposeful development right along Fort Ben Toll Road and Highway six and north of Highway six down past that area. But a lot of folks are waiting for infrastructure and so forth. And then the biggest thing in Missouri City, and you guys know this if you're on planning and zoning, is we are big demand for land, big demand for infrastructure, and then redevelopment. We also have to keep redevelopment in mind. We've got, we've got some of our stuff that's written, our policies are written that don't keep in mind old urban areas. They don't keep in mind smaller lots that, because nowadays, the big lots are hu- are big acre lots and quarter lots, and there is landscaping requirements, aesthetic requirements, that a lot of the old corridors don't keep that in mind. So we have to talk to the developers, the parcels of land that are left, like in this diagram. This is conceptual, but we talk to all the landowners on Texas Parkway. It's the entrance to Missouri City on Highway ninety. We want to be purposeful. We want to make sure that whatever's coming in is going to be reflective of of the brand that that we want to promote and verify that we are able to come here and present to you, planning, zoning, and City Council, something that's appropriate and that's appropriate for the stakeholders and for the businesses. I will pass it over to the city engineer.
Thank you, Herman. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Commissioners. So talking about some utility and capital improvement projects we have coming in. So Jennifer talks about a lot of the planning. What are we looking at long range? Herman talked about who's coming in and knocking at our doors. We need to have the infrastructure to meet those needs, long range and immediate. And so we're doing some work both in utilities and in mobility roadway to help make that happen. Some of the utilities projects we have going on right now. So we're working on a final or a second stage of an upgrade to our Mustang Bayou wastewater treatment plant, taking it from one M G D to two M G D, doubling capacity. We're looking at further expansions from there. Do we take it to three, four, four point five? What are we looking at for a city? So we're working on planning on that. We have two groundwater facilities in this area, our Mustang plants, one and two. We're looking at expansions in those facilities, both rehabilitating the existing groundwater storage tanks and then expanding the water pumping capacity of those to meet the growing needs of this Highway six Fort Ben Toll Road area, some Mustang Bayou service area. We're doing line projects, too. We're making all this great water. People are making all this great sewage, and we need to get them to the right places. And so we are, what we just completed, our, just about completed, transmission line project that's taking wastewater from some of the new developments that are coming west of Town Center two over, opening, over to our Mustang Bayou wastewater treatment plant. That'll free up some capacity out in that Hurricane Lane area. So we're going to be able to do some line expansion projects there to open up development in that area. We're also adding some wastewater transmission lines down Shipman's Cove and along Trammell Fresno to open up construction and development in those areas for some of the great projects Herman's talking about coming in. When we talk about mobility within this same area, there's about three really big projects that are going on, and these are projects that we're partnering with Fort Ben County on. First, we're working on Trammell Fresno. We're going to take that road. It's right now, it's an asphalt, eleven foot wide, each lane, kind of narrow, bumpy road. We're going to widen it up. It's going to be twelve-foot lanes, six-foot, six-foot sides. It's going to have walking sidewalks, nice six-foot paths, and it's going to be concrete. And it's going to be a beautiful road. It's going to help development up in that kind of middle section of our city. Down along Watts, right now, Watts from Sienna to Knight's Road is a two-lane road. We're going to be expanding that. We're taking that up to three lanes. That's one lane in each direction and a center continuous turn lane. We're reworking the drainage in that area. That's one of the biggest things that we're working on with the county and their engineers to look at drainage, to improve how drainage moves along Watts. As a second part to that, that first one, we call Watts West. Watts East, that's building out and connecting Watts from Knight over to Shipman's Cove. That's proposed to be a four-lane boulevard section, very similar to how Watts looks from Shipman's up to Highway six right now. And so we're working on that. That's Park County project. There's a developer that's actually building part of that road with Town Center three right now, saving the city and the county some money and investment. And that's going to help open up all of that area for some of the long-range and short-range work that's coming in. So those are those projects that we got, but we do have some gaps.
Jennifer, could you go to the mic, please? Thank you. Okay, we're going to turn it over to you all to have discussion. And what we hope to achieve coming out of here is to find where those gaps might be so that we can put together that plan to bring back for the Commission and for the Council on the next steps.
Sure. Well, thank you, Jennifer. If you can just stay there for a little bit as we open up discussions, I'm sure there's some of those, you know, questions and and stuff that come from P and Z and from City Council as well. So I guess my always, I'll start off with this. My, you know, it's always been, how does a project, a prospective project or looking to do business, how do they come through and how to get to P and Z and how to get to City Council? Can you walk us through that? Who's all in there, such as pre-development meetings and things of that type of nature? So how does that overall come through?
Sure. So I'm going to start with just the process itself, but then I want to end with kind of the bigger picture of that to help with that discussion. So the process itself, someone, a property owner, developer, is ready to construct, ready to build on their property. If it's a major, you know, kind of project, then they will schedule a meeting with city staff for a pre-development meeting. Pre-development meeting brings all of us together. So as you can, as you can see, there are all different professions and disciplines that are part of the development process. So that pre-development meeting will have a planner or a member of the planning team. It'll have the engineering division. It'll have economic development. It'll have our building official or representative, have our fire marshal. So depending on what the scope of that project is, you'll have all of the teams that that project may touch over the course of their activity. The goal of that pre-development meeting is to understand what the project is and to give that person information as it pertains to adopted city codes, regulations, and then the next steps for them. So whether it's a zoning situation, plating situation, permitting situation, any of those along the way, that's what that meeting is geared to discuss. After they have that meeting, then they're ready for their first development application. And again, depends on the project. If zoning is an issue, zoning has to be done first. So if, as the Commission, as the Council knows, zoning is property rights. So every piece of property in our city has a zoning district or zoning classification. So if I buy a piece of property with an intention to develop that property for a specific use and that use is not permitted per that zoning, the first step that I'm doing is seeking to amend the zoning. Anyone has rights to submit an application, a property owner has rights to submit an application to amend. That application goes through public hearing process, public notice process before the Planning and Zoning Commission, advisory to the Council. The Council takes the final action on that application. Zoning's in place. They moved to subdivision. What subdivision? Subdividing land. So I know this is the boundary of my property. I know the encumbrances. I know where my utilities are going to be laid. I know where reservations for detention or drainage or any of that. I know what my buildable area is. All of that is based on the zoning district that's identified and all of the other development codes that the city has adopted. From plating, once the plat is in place, they move to permitting, and then permitting becomes a little bit more standardized across the region. Permitting in accordance with adopted building codes, fire codes, all of the development codes that the city has adopted. From there, we move to inspections, and there you move to grand opening. So that's, that's the process. But I want to back that up because the role of the Commission, once it gets into those kind of phases, on a staff level, what we're looking at are what the adopted codes are. So at that point, the policy has already been created. We're implementing that policy. But the starting point for that is the comprehensive plan. What has been established as the collective What has been established as the collective combined policy for where the city wants to go. And that comprehensive plan then informs zoning changes on the text that are then implemented through the zoning process, through the subdivision process, through the development review process.
Okay. So just to, and the part of the reason I've asked that, thank you for explaining that process, because sometimes, some of our, you know, sometimes residents, they may not know this tedious process that we have put in place. And, you know, that you as staff have pre-development meetings, and you go through making sure that it aligns with our comprehensive cities, city's comprehensive plan. And then from there, that you move to the zoning and, you know, ultimately, of course, the city, it comes to City Council. So I just have two follow-up questions to that. When I hear residents, you know, talk about that they were not notified, or they were not notified to, I'm not talking about any particular project. I'm just talking about in general, right? What we hear as City Council members in, during public comments or public hearings that people come up and talk about. So, can you explain at what point in time from pre-development meeting to going to planning and zoning? What are those steps?
Sure. Sure. And so now, say for the notice, there's different levels. So you have, when you're going through the comprehensive plan process, you have citizen engagement that's part of that process. So you can have a different kind of outreach, different kind of engagement, different kind of, you know, receipt of information. When it's going through a zoning process, there are legislatively dictated timeframes on when notification goes out. So a lot of development projects are not linear. There will be times where staff might meet with them in pre-development meeting, and they may not submit their first development application for another year, another two years. You know, it may be further down the line. Once they submit the development application on a zoning case, there's certain periods of time prior to the scheduled public hearing that notice has to be mailed out to property owners within a certain distance. And property owners, it's not just residential. So it's any property owner. So whether a utility owns property, whether another public entity owns property, whether the state owns property, whether a resident owns property. It's any property owner that's within the established distance. The state mandated distance is a minimum of two hundred feet around the perimeter of a property. Traditionally, the city has gone two hundred and fifty feet, and we've had different conversations about the adequacy of that, and depending on the type of application it is. What we also do is we post a sign on the property to help get that information out to those that might, may not get a direct mailing. The other way that notification goes out is it's published in the newspaper of record, which the newspaper of record now for the city is the Fort Ben Independent. And so notices are published in the Fort Ben Independent ahead of the City Council public hearing for a requested zoning case.
So if I heard you right, you said there's three steps that you take. One is mailing out to two hundred feet, right? And second is if it's zoning, clearly if it's zoning, there's a state law requires us to follow that law, right? So, and then the third process, I think, that we've been doing is, if you go to the subject property, then you see a big sign. It almost looked like a campaign sign size, forty-eight by forty-eight or something like that, and it's, it's on there. So there's three ways of notifying, or for people finding out what it is. One question that I guess I want to clear up before I yield my time, is how much time before that you put that out there? So, in, in question is, earlier in public comments, we heard that something came out on Friday, and then it's planning and zoning where to meet, you know. So I'm looking at that, like, based on zoning, how much of a leadway is required to, to put that information out?
So, before the public hearing, before the Planning and Zoning Commission, mailed notices goes out to property owners within two hundred and fifty feet, about eleven days prior to that public hearing date. So it's put into the mail about eleven days before. When those notices are put into the mail is when the sign is posted on the property itself. The City Council public hearing is usually about a month following that. So the mailed notice will reference the date, the time of the Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing, and then also reference that a second public hearing would be scheduled before the City Council. So the communication that goes out is there are two public hearings that will be held regarding any zoning amendment case. One before the planning and zoning, one before City Council. So that's the communication that goes out for that.
You just said something that reminded me too. So when you look at zoning for a property, right, someone bought, if that doesn't align with the city's comprehensive plan, or does not align with what they're planning to put in that, in that particular spot, at the pre-development meeting, what is, what happens there?
So typically, that would be conveyed. And so say again, you know, someone comes and, you know, this is, I'm, I have this property under contract, or I'm looking to purchase this property, or I've purchased this property, and this is the only thing I want to do, and the zoning doesn't allow for it, then they would be advised on what the zoning amendment process looks like. And there's a different, you know, there's, there's different levels to that. So just like I described, just kind of the overall process. Staff would go over the overall process. This is what you would do, point, 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 point. If there's issues or concerns that have been expressed or raised, then that might be shared with them too, depending on what that is. So sometimes it's conveyed. It may not be an easy, you know, process to go through. It's always conveyed that it's not a guaranteed process. So just because someone has an idea that they want to do something, and just because they make an application to change the zoning, does not mean that it results in the property being rezoned. So their advice of that full, you know, goes through public hearings and goes through that, that process.
Okay, good. I yield my time back if anybody want to ask a question or so.
Yes, man. First of all, thank you for making sure that this meeting happened. It's long overdue. Welcome Commissioners. And I think that I've come before you guys, and thank you for your service in the past. I think my, my comments and questions center around our current comprehensive plan as well as our current zoning. If I'm not mistaken, the last time we looked at our zoning was eighty-four? Or did some, any modifications, or was it?
Was a full wholesale update of zoning, not ever, other than the nineteen eighty-one. So zoning, zoning established in Missouri City in nineteen eighty-one. There's been modifications, amendments, you know, to different areas, but not a whole sale.
Nineteen eighty-one.
Yeah, the original zoning was eighty-one.
And so, and so we've been operating off of a comprehensive plan based off of zoning from nineteen eighty-one. And so I guess the point that I was going to make and question that I was going to raise to the Commissioners, you know, because I feel like it leaves them in a position to make decisions based off of, yes, we have a comprehensive plan, but they're left to have to make decisions, and basically based off of personal gut feel, or maybe the information that you all provide them, based off of the comprehensive plan. But do you all feel comfortable knowing that nineteen eighty-one was the last time we looked at zoning, and you guys get presented with these opportunities to make decisions on, on rezoning opportunities? You know, how do you all, I would like to know how y'all feel about it.
I could make a millennial joke with that date you put out, but I'll just say no. The comfort level is not adequate, given where we're at. I am, I'm going to take this time to ask a question as well. So hopefully answered your question. I don't feel comfortable with that. But part of my comfort level would increase going back to the mayor's comments on notices. Is there room in this answer as part of the gap question as well? Could we address how we're putting out notices to constituents as an example? You mentioned a publication on record. It's the Fort Ben Independent. That's a newspaper. It's a legacy media. Is there ways that we could expand that? At least another publication or social media, something like that? And then the other, I'll just, I'll stop for there, because I deviated from what he was saying. But notices is a gap, and then I provide a recommendation. And then, just general feeling is, I think that's why we're here, to update it and have a more comprehensive plan that would work for today's terms, for today's Missouri City. That'll help Planning and Zoning make better decisions.
Because you all are operating off of zoning from nineteen eighty-one, as well as a comprehensive plan that, I guess, we're now moving on six years?
Yeah, and I do want to kind of interject on that, because it's not that all, so, not all of the land that was zoned in nineteen eighty-one has been untouched since eighty-one. We have pockets. We have some that, you know, since it was either annexed into the city and zoned or from eighty-one, that has not been changed. But what I would put on the floor is in that, the city in the eighties did several city-initiated zoning actions. So you have the initial establishment of zoning that was city-initiated. So it wasn't a developer that came to the city and said, "I want to build homes on this property." It was the city initiated. This is our plan. This is the zoning that supports going towards that plan. The city went away from city-initiated zoning in the eighties. And basically nineties to present, it's really been project-led. So somebody has a project that they want, you know, to do. They're still working, you know, with, you know, different policies. It may be in line, you know, with priorities. But generally, the city doesn't go in and initiate that zoning action. We wait for, you know, someone to make that zoning application. So I just want to put that on, on the floor.
I mean, you know, we're talking about forty-three years ago, where, you know, we had this city-initiated zoning, and we have allowed the developers to come in and dictate, you know, and put planning and zoning and the council in the, in the position of having to take winners and losers. And I guess that's why I asked the question about comfort, or how you all feel with these deals coming for you. Because I know that if we as a council collectively and staff say, this is where we're, what we want our city to look like as we continue to build out the remaining parcels of land that Herman talked.
Sorry. Felt like my voice was big enough. That Herman talked about being left, three hundred, four hundred some odd parcels, then it, it tells us, it tells the commission, and it tells current and future council and staff, this is what we want our city to look like. So if something comes before the, the Planning and Zoning Commission, they can look to an updated comprehensive plan, which includes revised zoning, and know that, yeah, okay, this developer wants to do this. However, councils, the city has been cleared on how we want to move forward with these various parcels of land. So that's why I.
So, if no one has it, I'd like to follow up and ask you this so that our audience can understand this, and maybe perhaps City Manager, you can chime in a little bit too. The way I understood it is zoning and comprehensive plan is two components, but they mix well together. So your zoning dictates to what in that area to be developed. But your comprehensive plan, which, how often would we do that? Five years, every four, five, six, five?
So, so the outlook of a comprehensive plan can be decades, but it needs to be constantly reviewed to make sure that it's still consistent.
So, your comprehensive plan, that every five years or so, City Manager, that you would look at, that's a tool for you as well, for a City Council, as to what the city should look like. Now, within that, what it should look like, if there are zoning changes that we need to change to retrofit that, whenever that council's vision, whoever is on council, that vision collectively as a group, then that's where we go in and saying that this is what we needed to shape it up, right? Am I saying that right or wrong?
Yeah, you are, you are. And what I would say to that, because like, even, so Herman talked about the redevelopment piece. So in the comprehensive plan, it created basically a future land use category that provided flexibility for redevelopment areas. Our zoning districts didn't change. So what that means is, is if some, a developer comes and wants to develop a piece of property, they might get a favorable look from the policy and the goals of the comprehensive plan, but they still have to go through a zoning process. As opposed to, you have a comprehensive plan that has that policy, then you create an overlay district that's specific, you know, to those regulations. So then you remove the requirement for a developer when they're ready to develop, or the city's initiating development in an area, from having to go through that zoning amendment process. It's already in line with the comprehensive plan implemented through zoning.
Sure. So if I heard you say it right, is anyone walking through that door to the City Hall, or to your office, that wanting to build whatever they want, right? So you got zoning, you got comprehensive plan, right? You look at those two and say, does this even match up to what we wanting to do, or what the city's direction, or the future should look like? And if it's not, the vision, I should say, if, if it's not, then that right there, it, it goes back to that person and saying that, well, this is not within our comprehensive plan of, or in that particular area, or in that spot that we're looking at. Is that right?
Yeah. So, so the day-to-day, what staff is looking at is zoning, because that's what they're implementing day-to-day. So the way that it works is, if a city adopts zoning, it has to be, you can't adopt zoning if you don't have a comprehensive plan in the state of Texas. Because basically, what it's saying is, is you can't be arbitrary in, okay, you're good, but you're not. So you create the comprehensive plan to give yourself that vision, and then zoning implements what that vision is. So day-to-day, it would be zoning. Any property owner can, can submit to request to change it and go through the process to change it. But on the city side, and that's, you know, where I'm encouraged with everyone, you know, here at the table, because everything that the city says at all levels, in all of its plans, all of its master plan, and its budget process, all of that, should convey what that comprehensive plan has established. So where the city puts its resources, where it puts its investments, you know, where it's putting, you know, its utility investments, its business recruitment, all of that. All of that should say the same thing, in addition to the development tools.
And if we were, no, please go.
If I may really quickly though, point out that the, the city's ordinances do provide for amendments to the comprehensive plan. So for example, if the nature or character of an area is changing faster than that comprehensive plan, and that future land use map, language is often included in the ordinance to capture the change in the comprehensive plan, where the two were not always consistent.
I think, no, no, go ahead.
That, that was going to be my question. Is part of the, the issue that you seen just, you know, objectively commenting, a lot of times, the requests that are put before us as a commission is to change a certain zone for, for building, whatever it is, that's fair, fair statement? So I, I think, and, and so this is my question. Part of that, now knowing about the city ordinance part, is that also because of the comprehensive plan being, not, not growing as fast, or having enough room to grow as fast as the?
Well, I think, so those are flags, right? So, so typically, like, on the professional side, what we would say, if you're getting several zoning cases that are requesting, you know, the same thing or a series of things, then it may be time to reevaluate what the code is. You know, if you're getting several cases where people want need variances, you know, to do something, then it's a flag to say that something may not be connected, and you need to reevaluate that. And I think that's where, you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission can be used to, you know, put that onto the commission to go take a look at this area. You know, one of, you know, the things that we're talking about are outside of the four corridors that are identified in the comprehensive plan. You know, so the areas that we're talking about, these fast-growing areas, are areas that are shown on a future land use map, or, you know, in the comprehensive plan, but we don't have area plans on those specific areas. So what is, you know, the collective combined, you know, vision? You know, how does that relate to the overall goals of balancing the tax base? You know, of, you know, providing amenities, you know, that are being requested? So that would be something that then would be analyzed and looked at. A policy created, goals created, priorities created. And then, looking at the zoning ordinance and other development tools to make sure that they're in line with that.
I think City Manager, you have some.
No, I, I think Jennifer covered it pretty well, as well as Ejoyce. I, I think the only other piece that I would add is doing all this, especially given the timeframe that has existed in terms of focusing on the comprehensive plan. We're dealing with things piecemeal, but we have to look at things holistically, not only from the development of the property, but also how can we serve it from a utilities perspective, from a road construction perspective? So all of that needs to be taken into consideration and built into our overall plan for how we develop. And of course, as, as I'm quickly finding out, the philosophy of Missouri City eighty, I mean, in twenty years ago is very different than that philosophy now. And so, that needs to be put into the equation, because as we talk about. And so that needs to be put into the equation because as we talk about trying to diversify the tax base, not relying on residents or property taxes, we really don't have that many other options. Sales taxes is one of the things we would go to. And so how do we do that? And how do we do that in a way that respects the values this community has, safety, capacity, all of that? And so that's the only thing I would add, but I think Jennifer nailed it.
So I just wanted to answer council member Boni's question a little bit for myself. I would say I'm getting more comfortable, I've been doing this a little over a year. I, there's a couple of things that city staff really provides us, especially when we're looking at zoning changes, is they do the analysis for how that zoning change does or does not comply with the land use that's sitting out there in the comprehensive plan. I use the comprehensive plan, I got the little spiral around book and I go to the, the maps online, trying to learn my way through it. The one thing I will say where I'm probably most uncomfortable is the balancing of the uh, I'm trying out the word I'm trying to use, but, but diversifying the tax base, right? That's probably the biggest area where, uh, at least when I look at it, is that really my role? Or do you kind of, the city council makes, has the higher, has the better view of, of what the requirements are there? That's probably the one area where I feel most uncomfortable. I will say also, I watch as stuff comes through us and ends up at city council. I'll watch the city council meetings to see what city council talks about. That's a, that's helpful, at least for me.
Well, thank you. Go ahead. No, go, please, anybody.
Okay, Jennifer and staff, uh, thank everybody. And it's so good to see you guys. Welcome. So it's been a long time, we've been trying to get this going. Um, and for a long time that I served on the commission, I always wanted to have an opportunity to talk with my council members so that I could understand exactly what it is that they were expecting of us. So it's really also good to hear your feedback as well. So I have several questions and I'm hoping that it'll turn into dialogue. Earlier in your presentation, you talked about the four corridors in two thousand and seventeen. What were those corridors and how do you see that those corridors have changed as of today?
Very good. So uh, four corridors, Texas Parkway from Highway ninety to Turtle Creek, Cartwright Road from Texas Parkway to FM ten ninety-two, FM ten ninety-two from Cartwright North to the city limits, and then the Fort Ben Parkway Corridor, um, basically from Lake Olympia to Seana Parkway.
Okay. In all of that that I heard you say, does that also encompass the Fort Ben toll road?
So in the area where it intersects at Highway six. So it includes that area where the Fort Ben Town Center two, three, um, are starting to be developed. Fort Ben Town Center two a little further along. Um, it includes that intersection.
Okay, thank you. In terms of the zoning being established back in nineteen eighty, eighty-one, eighty-four, whatever it is, we have often seen where applicants do come in and they already know what the zoning is. And before we know it, it's already on the ground, it's up and running and people are angry and upset. We've talked about this before in the past. Does the city have the authority to initiate zoning?
Yes.
Okay, um, I guess this would probably more be more so a question for legal. In terms of the city initiating zoning, um, are there certain risks that we could possibly be faced with?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I don't want you to understand, y'all saw her face, if I may, she was getting ready to get me. So, okay, thank you. And that may be probably why we have not initiated as many um zonings as we possibly could, but that is an option. So that's, that's also good to know. In terms of zoning, Jennifer, considering that we do have some areas that are zoned so old and you do have people that come before us asking for land to be rezoned, in terms of what can we do collectively to make sure that we get really good zoning or that we get things that the city needs as estates inside of our comprehensive plan? Which would be the better zoning structure for us to go with?
So that's a loaded question.
I know.
Um, so I would say, you know, to uh, the question, you know, before on just kind of the age of zoning, you know, there is an opportunity, you know, to review the zoning districts. You know, if you look at how Missouri City does its zoning districts, um, it does allow for a lot of flexibility um, as opposed to some communities that I, um, they adopt like the census land use, you know, kind of matrix. And there's pros and cons, you know, to either way of doing that. There's also situations where you've had portions of land that have been carved out of a larger portion that has been zoned a certain way with the developer's expectation that, you know, the proximity of this is going to trigger, you know, certain types of land uses to go in. So what I would say to that is from our vantage point, when you look at zoning, zoning runs with the land. Zoning is property rights. So zoning is not, you know, project specific. So when we're talking about a zoning action, we're talking about, you know, not just that property, what, what's surrounding that property, what could be surrounding that property and trying to understand how that piece um is situated within our larger, you know, kind of priorities. So at this point, we do need to reevaluate our zoning districts for those areas that have developed where you had a builder that was solely concentrated on building a specific product. They built that specific product and they left this portion out. Um, and that portion has a zoning designation. Um, so we need to reevaluate those kinds of situations. Um, but wholesale, because you don't want it so narrow where it's, it's not business specific. We're not, you know, through zoning, we're not saying we want this business, but not this business. We're saying the characteristics of how you use the land are appropriate at this location and appropriate at any this, you know, any land that has that same zoning um classification.
So, and thank you, because that leads me to my next uh talking point. So zoning is exactly just that. It is not about the actual building or business that's going to go on the land. So oftentimes I hear residents come and they're, you know, they're stating their concerns about you're changing this to bring in a Trader Joe's and da, 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 da. But is it really about the Trader Joe's as much as it is about the zoning? Can you talk to us in regards to that?
And I'm a fan of Trader Joe's.
I am too.
But right, it is, so on the zoning side, and that's, that's why for the city, we, you have all, you know, tools that you put into play to manifest the vision, right? So for the zoning side, the zoning tool is the land use. You know, so, you know, compared to Houston, where you don't have the certainty that, you know, this manufacturing company, you know, is going to build right next to, you know, your property, whatever you're using your property for, you don't have that level of certainty. That's what zoning can provide. It doesn't provide that this particular business is going to be the business that occupies this space, but it can provide certainty in terms of, you know, the outdoor space, you know, the size of the building, the placement of the building, proximity of one building to another. It can provide those kinds of certainty that, you know, should help your investment in your property for whatever you're using your property for, to understand, you know, kind of what may be developed on the other property.
Mayor, I just have three more.
Let me just say that too, after we have vice chairman, we have mayor Porton, that I'm aware of.
Okay, okay.
And I'm hoping these questions are for everybody.
In terms of when something is zoned a certain way, if it's for a specific um applicant, they've come in and they've asked for this to be zoned for uh a church or whatever it is that they're asking. And once it's zoned, at what point in time does the zoning die? Say it loud.
Uh, so again, so zoning is property rights. So, and that's, you know, the attempt in conveying information, you know, in terms of that action. Zoning is property rights, it runs with the land. So there's no guarantee that you zone a piece of property a certain way that it's going to be developed that way in a specific timeframe. So for instance, we have cases where, you know, there may have been a place of assembly that attended to go, you know, on a piece of property. They zoned it for that purpose many, many years ago and they've since sold the property and no longer have that intention to develop it for that purpose. Um, so there are groups that will come and seek to change the zoning. So the property rights of it does not die, it doesn't expire per se. There are certain, you know, cases, we have specific use permits, um, which is a zoning. Um, but it is also, it's, it's permission to use the property for that specified use. And there's uses that require that in certain zoning districts. There's certain expirations that can be placed on that. But use districts, plan development districts are zoning that runs with the land.
Okay. And then this will be my uh last, last thing. In terms of trying to shape our city so that we don't continue to get certain types of businesses, because maybe we feel like we have more than enough of those types of businesses. Does staff or anybody have any types of recommendations on how we collectively can, can do that?
Bring it up. Bring it up to, to investigate. Um, so and, and we're aware of some, we'll be bringing forward, um, some actions on some, uh, giving kind of recommendations um on that. There are situations where, you know, you see certain businesses that may have a negative impact that may um tend to cluster in certain areas that you want to use your development tools um to either put regulations on in terms of distances away, buffers away or uh capping the number, you know, within a certain area. So there are, you know, businesses like that. Um, uh, what we call credit access businesses or title um companies are one uh that uh the city adopted regulations in terms of the number within a certain area uh and then certain provisions that they have to um provide in order to be permitted in certain areas. Uh, massage establishments, uh, works with the Fort Ben County DA's office on regulations for that. So there's certain permitting requirements uh that they have to go through in order to establish um a new facility. Um, so there are ways that you can use those tools to that effect. What you don't want to do, because what the city doesn't do is pick winners and losers um in the market. So, you know, we have a phenomenon of when Walgreens and CVS would go corner to corner. You know, that's in, you know, communities across the, the country. You have banks um over near Sugar Land Town Center. I don't know if you remember when Chase Bank had a location on three of the four corners? You know, that intersection, you know, things like that, you know, if, if it's a use that um is not creating, you know, harm or a nuisance or something like that, then you may not want to restrict it down to that level because you don't want to create those winners, losers in the market and, and raise prices on other, you know, pieces of land. But um, ones that you're having issues with, you can look at um certain tools um to address that.
Could one, can I comment to what you were saying then? Could one of those tools be the comprehensive plan if it's revised however often, five years, six years, something like that? Cause if it is, and, and city attorney, let me know if I'm stepping out of line. I think city council has the authority to put their ideas of what they want the city to be in a comprehensive plan. It's not a legal binding document, it's a guide. It's a set of principles and ideas to make the city better. And we entrusted you all to do that. So I, that's what I'm hoping, I, I know this isn't the first meeting we have for whatever input commission, uh, the P and Z commission can put in, like to offer that. But I, I think that should be part of our guidepost into putting in the kind of businesses we want to see. I'd support you in it.
Mr. Davidson, I'm telling you, that's exactly where we're trying to get with this. Is our burning desire to get it on paper. Um, there are some, there is some of our desire inside of the current plan. But getting it updated is so critical for us right now at this point. For me, gaps, um, just, just in this dialogue is, I really want us to get to the point where we recognize earlier that there is a need, you know, to place moratoriums on certain businesses and not just saying that, oh, we know, we know, we know, but we, we've got to get us to the point where we're pulling that trigger sooner. Because what happens is we get stressed too. And sometimes we're trying to relax on a weekend, but then our emails are loaded up with photographs of e-cigarette signs throughout the medians and, you know, vape shop is now open and all of these things. And so if we know that certain things are coming before us and it's getting to the point where it seems like it's oversaturated, we need to be able to come in immediately and address those things instead of waiting. So that's a big gap for me and it's, and it's frustrating to, to be honest with you. Um, in terms of us understanding what land is left, thank you Herman for providing that to us. We've been kind of waiting on that information for a long time. And if the need is right now for us to determine what land is left, what it needs to be zoned as, I think we need to make it a priority. I'll yield, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, I'm going to go to uh, uh, vice chair.
Jennifer, you're an amazing teacher. I've relied on you for all these years. You're really good at teaching us this material, there's a lot of it. When you present a project, at the end of the project, you have a recommendation, positive or negative recommendation based on one of the criteria, if it goes in line with the overall plan for the city. Is that applied per property, meaning this property falls in line with comprehensive plan? Or the, the project itself, like multifamily? If a multifamily, we need more diversified housing and it says it falls in line with the comprehensive plan, is it property specific that you're recommending?
And I, I think that's a, that's a great question, because we do have that situation, you know, right? With, with certain land uses that may have been vocalized as priorities. When you have a, a recommendation on a specific zoning case, it's an analysis of that piece of property. Um, so the recommendation is looking at that zoning on that piece of property, what the goals are in the comprehensive plan, what the future land use plan has identified it as, um, and then adding, you know, um, the additional information um on utility provision, economic development um and things like that. So it is very property specific when you have that recommendation in place. You may have some analysis where if it is something that, say, you know, there's this particular property and there's, you know, issues there from a, a recommendation standpoint, you may have, this meets a goal, um, but there's a challenge here. There's a challenge with utilities, there's a challenge because it's wetlands. You know, there's a challenge because it's the floodway. Um, you know, so there, there may be situations like that.
How many times have you made a recommendation based upon the comprehensive plan that you feel needs to be updated and changed? They made the recommendation based on old categories.
Um, oh, that's a loaded question too. Giving away the tools of our trade. Um, so I, I, I don't know, I, I don't, I can't quantify that right here. But what I would say is what we, we would try to do is to communicate, you know, that there is a gap there. So I, I give, because it was a segue I wanted to put on the table anyway. Civic uses, schools, churches, um, we've had those come before us. And the comprehensive plan is silent when it comes to those civic uses. But when we're talking about land uses that are desired and when we're talking about balancing, you know, um, or maximizing the land use available, that's part of the package that it comes with it. Because the people who will inhabit it, the people who will use it also need places that they can express their faith or express their, you know, whatever that is, educate, you know, their children. Those are usually not taxpaying uses. So that, those are situations where we have to balance, we don't have a specific goal, comprehensive plan is silent, there's an application before us, how do you make a recommendation on that? And so the, to me, that's a gap I would put out there. Um, because we've had, you know, very clear questions on what are the measures that the city is looking for? You know, what are good locations, you know, for these types of land uses? So that is part of the package, is we're talking about those uses that are desirable. We're also talking about those supplemental uses, the job creators, you know, or those, those types of uses that need a place, the cell towers, you know, they need a place. Um, but we have to kind of balance that um with our, our desires.
Thank you, Jennifer.
All right, I'm going to go to Mayor Porton.
So this is, um, this is, first of all, I want to say thank you to our P and Z commissioners. I want to say thank you so much for your service and for everything that you all do um to serve our city. Jennifer, how long have you been with the city in uh the Development Services Department?
Well, seeing as I'm 21.
Right.
No, I've been with the city 18 years. Eighteen, eighteen years.
Eighteen years.
And I'm 21.
And thank you, thank you for your service and all that you do. I just wanted to know, looking back 18 years ago versus now, what shifts have you seen from a project presentation standpoint from developers? What are the major shifts that you've seen from maybe even 10 years ago? Let's say, not when you were 21, but 10 years ago to now? What projects, and given that every project that is presented doesn't always, you know, come to fruition for whatever reasons, whether it doesn't pass through P and Z or it's just the developer realizes that this is just not a good idea or they're not the right place. What, what projects are you seeing as a shift from 10 years ago to now? Like, why are developers wanting to come here now versus 10 years ago?
So I respond to that last part because Missouri City is the place to be.
But what have they seen? What is, what's, what's making them come here? So that would be one, one, one question. And the other question, the shift in, in projects from 10 years ago to now.
So what, what I would say, my experience here, and even just kind of the history is, is this has always been a hotbed for single-family residential development. So you had a lot of builders, you know, that were just trying to scoop up every piece of property they could for a single-family residential. And that's resulted in, you know, a lot of the, the big subdivisions that we've seen come online over that period of time. Then you saw a shift to the job creation and the warehousing and kind of capitalizing on the regional, you know, different communities being built out around the regional, you know, kind of transportation network to the ship channel, you know, to 290, to other parts. Those places starting to build out. So you started to see that shift of, okay, the city has an opportunity here and moving into that direction.
Thank you.
Over the last few years has been the more amenities, full-service community. You know, desiring to have things that are here. You know, desiring to have entertainment options here, after nine o'clock PM options, you know, here. Desiring to have sit-down restaurants here. So that has been a change in certain mindsets and perspectives and kind of different approaches to what kind of gets an audience and what doesn't get an audience per se.
All right, I'm going to go to Councilmember Riley.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you guys for being here tonight. Those who were able to, to make it, thank you on your busy schedules. And Jennifer and staff, everybody has presented some great information. The question that I have, I have my glasses on, I have a couple of good, different questions. So when, when developers are coming here and they're doing their pre-development meeting with you, and my question is, do they have to divulge what type of businesses that they're going to be bringing so that y'all can discuss what type of zoning can go on that particular property? So that you don't have mishaps down the line for their tenants?
That's always the goal. But some are more forthcoming than others. So in particular, I know there's been communication about strip centers and, you know, those multi-tenant buildings that have been, you know, part of the kind of that development pattern. You know, you have frontage that's zoned for commercial, let me go put in a multi-tenant building and attract, you know, whoever, you know, is willing to pay the rents, you know, that I put up out there. So typically those types of facilities is you'll have someone come, they want to build the center. Some developers will come with a package, they have a network, they have relationships or they're working, you know, in tandem to bring certain tenants here. Some are just trying to provide the space and it's a built-to-sit. And so in those cases, they're not always forthcoming as to who might be the future tenants in those spaces. What we try to guard with is this is what you're zoned for. Nonetheless, we will tend to run into those cases of a use that applies to go into a building that isn't permitted within that center. So what we do from the staff level is try to give them the best, you know, information to kind of maximize what they're doing. At the end of the day, they can make decisions within the scope of, you know, whatever it is that they're applying for. So like, for instance, you know, on the zoning side, you have minimum parking requirements. So typically it's if you don't know what your users are going to be, restaurants are usually the biggest driver of parking. So if you design a space that you don't have adequate parking that could accommodate a restaurant use within a, you know, certain percentage of your shopping center, you're putting limitations on yourself. And so when that restaurant comes to the city to try to locate there, you know, there's not a whole lot, you know, of wiggle room we have if the center wasn't designed for that purpose.
And then my second question is to you and the commissioners. When you guys are considering zoning, you know, changing the zoning from the particular developers for their projects that are coming, do you guys take in consideration future ordinances that they're going to violate? Such as zoning a piece of property that is too close to certain areas that could create a noise, a nuisance and noise, or, you know, dogs barking, things like that. Do you guys look at the current ordinances that we have in place and take that in consideration when you're making your decisions to rezone particular properties?
I think we have limitations and legal is there at every meeting to guide us. There are buffers that we can make suggestions for, whether it's trees or walls or using different stone instead of, you know, chain link. And we try to see from the eyes of the residents that are surrounding it. We are limited, they are suggestions. But not law.
So do y'all see that as a, as a gap where we need to address certain boundaries in between certain areas to prevent issues down the line for, you know, these, these areas that are, and some of them may be zoned for that particular property, but the ones that you guys have to make a recommendation on, I don't know, those are suggestions. But do you consider that to be a gap where we need to raise the level of requirements from the city perspective to be able to limit future issues, you know, coming from the community?
I think the part of the thing that I, I guess, it's not, it's not a struggle, but that I have to think through is the limitations of planning and zoning. So if we have an issue before us, to my Vice Chair's point, we're using staff, we're using what we have at our disposal, then we can only make recommendations. Our thoughts and feelings kind of have to be out the window. I know what's right from wrong. I know what I would want to do, but as a commissioner and within what we're allowed to do, we have to make a decision off of that. So if it, if we had rules that that fix the issue, then we wouldn't be tied behind our, have our hands tied behind our backs, so to speak. Where we wouldn't have to worry about feelings or, well, clearly this is too close to the deal, but we're, you know, beholden to our, to what's in front of us legally.
Jennifer, do you think that's a gap that we need to, to look at to raise the level of, you know, our codes and regulations?
Yeah, and I think on the, the comprehensive plan side, it's the, the policy of how you want, you know, kind of development to be integrated or uses to be integrated. And then the implementation of that would be looking at, you know, what tools do you have in place right now? You have landscaping standards that create buffers. You know, again, to Councilmember Boni's point, that buffer requirement hasn't been changed, you know, since the mid to early eighties. You know, so is an eight-foot masonry wall, is that still appropriate? You know, 20 feet, you know, width, is that appropriate? You know, is it appropriate in all cases of any non-residential? And non-residential could be anything that's not residential. You know, so do those items need to be considered? But so, yeah, from the policy standpoint, you would establish, you know, that, you know, this is the type of community you're, you're seeking to make. And then from the implementation, you would relook at the ordinance regulations for those transitional buffer yard, or if there's other tools that might be available today that weren't available at that point.
I appreciate that. I think that's, that's a huge issue that we need to look at. Workshop that or something, because if we don't address these now, we're going to have future concerns, issues and complaints down the line. And we've had these in the past. And so I would definitely say we need to make this a priority to start addressing those areas. Because Missouri City is definitely hot, one of the fastest-growing cities, and we need to be able to be in front of certain projects before they turn into, you know, negative, you know, impacts on our, on our city.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Councilmember Emory.
Well, the question I had was really about the zoning classification SD. Can you, what's the basic description of SD as far as what can be placed on there? And how, from what I understand, there are situations where that's really just a fail-safe. You don't have any other place to put it or classify it, so you put it as SD.
Well, so and I'll say I put this on the table as a gap, planning staff was discussing this earlier. And there, we need to clarify that separation. So there's, there's basically the zoning ordinance is looking at it in two different ways. Is the zoning ordinance establishes that as the city annexes property, that because every piece of property in the city has to have a zoning classification, as the city annexes property, it will be assigned the SD suburban district designation. Now, the other side of it is, it's just like we talked about the process for zoning amendments. Zoning amendments go through public hearings. So when the city established zoning in 1981, it had a comprehensive plan, it went through a public hearing process, public notice process. It said, this is the zoning that we're going to assign to these properties. And then that was put into an ordinance. When it goes through a zoning amendment, if council approves, it's gone through a public hearing before planning a zoning, before city council, it's been noticed. All those legal requirements are in place. This is the property rights, this is the zoning for that property. When land is annexed into the city and is classified SD, it's not going through that public hearing process. So because it's not going through that public hearing process, the, when the commission, when the council, when you seek to establish permanent zoning for that property, then that's the zoning on the property, if that makes sense.
Okay, I'm going to go to Councilmember Boni.
Yeah, real quick, I just wanted to piggyback on something that Commissioner Davidson said. And I had a question of city manager and Jennifer as it relates to being objective versus subjective. Relying on staff for the information, facts and data to make a, an informed decision. I watch you all religiously. Y'all like rock stars. We appreciate your service. But no, it's a lot of work that you guys do. And I've seen a lot of, you know, subjective decision-making, especially in the past, not now, thankfully. But, you know, I just want to encourage you all to remain objective in your decision-making based off of the staff and not make decisions because this is not in my neighborhood, so I'm going to vote against it. You know, that actually happened. I've seen that happen a couple of times. And so I think you were a servant at that time as well, so you know what I'm talking, yeah, yeah. So I'm just saying, please continue, because what you all do is very important for us, for the city, and for what we're trying to do to keep Missouri City moving forward. So thank you all for that. My question is about just path forward, because I know we've talked about it. I know Councilwoman Brown Marshall brought it up as well. But timelines and, and, and working, I believe we need to definitely continue to work with planning zoning as we talk about the comprehensive plan and looking at zoning, et cetera. How we can best move forward and when we can start that process. So just putting that out there as to ask when we plan to move forward and will we get a timeline?
That has been a priority in every, every session, so that will be ironed out. And so part of this needed to happen for that as well. So the appraisal report is still reflective of this because what we'll present to you is our recommendation on whether or not what you're discussing and what you're conveying is completely off the grid from what you have in place or if we're talking about adding, expanding, putting in some of those gaps into that plan. So we needed to have this conversation so that we could solidify that recommendation, present that recommendation and then determine that path forward.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Did I understand that we currently do not have a redevelopment policy? Did I hear that correct?
Not so much a redevelopment policy, we do have, we do have policy reflected in the comprehensive plan on redevelopment. Now, to the gaps is we need to flush that out.
That, so for the next meeting, we don't have to open discussion now, but I think an actual redevelopment policy or guidance for some of our older parts of the city should be included in the comprehensive plan, because I think that's a gap currently. Just wanted to add that.
So Councilmember Emory, did you add something? Or no, go ahead.
Just real quick, the, the question of gaps, I wanted to just mention a couple that I thought kind of piggybacking on what we mentioned earlier is notifications of change in zoning. 250 feet's really not very far. And that's kind of the minimum. I would love to see us be much more proactive, much more open. Let's let us, I know, I know we do a lot of things to notify, but as far as direct mail, and not only that, if it goes through the Missouri City USPS, that's also not the most reliable. So anything to move that forward and expand that, I think that would be good. Secondly, I mean, I've, I've lived in Missouri City for 50 years off and on. And I've seen a lot of stuff and, and somebody brought up the initiated zoning, I think they talked about. There are plots of property in, in the city that the city should be proactive and removing, changing the zoning so specific businesses don't end up there. And the last one is traffic. We talk a lot about traffic and the stuff, and there are spaces in the city that we see property come up and traffic is always a discussion. That would be an area where the city can be much more proactive. We know where they are, we hear, hear from on a regular basis. And specifically though, the, the city's growing in certain areas where we have huge traffic issues. And that's an area I'd like to see is the city be a lot more proactive in trying to address those. I know they're not within the city's control, and then they're maybe on the other jurisdictions, but I think they, they pose a huge potential problem going forward. And thanks for doing this from everybody. Jennifer, thanks so much.
Thank you. I do have, before we go off, I do have a question for Shashi. Yes, sir. If you can come up here just real quick. It's really not so much of a question, I just wanted to get your input. One of the major things besides safety, right? You know, zoning, all of this. I go back to the commissioner's point, and I had it written down here, you beat me to it, is traffic has been a big issue, right? Certain developments wants to come, the zoning is correct, according to comprehensive plan is correct, right? But then what happens is the roadways, right? So, and, and I know because of that, we can't just stop, you know, what we're doing. So when you're, during the pre-development meetings of you knowing that's something that's all the boxes are checked, except for, you know, the roadway. How, how does that, so what's your take on it? Because I know for a fact that Tremafresno Road, it's a, it's a one-lane and it's head-on collision if you're looking at your phone. Same thing for Watts Plantation. So there's certain roadways in this city without us getting help through other agencies, when I say other agencies like Auburn County and elsewhere, we may not have to have the, the dollar amount to, to make it happen to the way that would fit that. So how does that work? Because that's the number one question that I can't answer as a, as a city councilman.
Yes, I'll try to answer that, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council and Commissioners, good to see you all. The number one, number one and number two questions we get is traffic and drainage. You ask the specific questions about traffic. Obviously, if it's a one-acre, two-acre site that's coming in where there's roadway capacity, there is not a whole lot of due diligence that goes into it. Let's say it's a 50-acre tract, there's a multifamily coming in, it's putting in more than 100 vehicles worth of traffic. We do what's called the TIA worksheet. That's the first thing we do, is to estimate how many trips of vehicles are coming in. Then we look at the roadway capacity. Sometimes the roads have the capacity to take the additional volume. Where it does not, we have asked for what's called a traffic impact analysis that looks at the existing roadway conditions. Is there capacity to take additional traffic? that looks at the existing roadway conditions, is there capacity to take additional traffic? Sometimes we go even abound beyond that. We have what's called the level of service. We estimate what's the base level of service on a particular roadway. With the projected increase in traffic, what does that level of service looks like at ultimate buildout? If it does not meet the threshold in our design criteria, we ask for improvements. The improvements could be to add an additional lane to accommodate load of traffic or widening, something along those lines. So that is what we do, is look at the development, see what level of traffic is coming. Just not now, factoring other developments coming in the region. Look at any potential projects and see what level of impact it will have on existing conditions. That's the bottom line that we look at, especially on major projects.
So when we work with the other agencies and they have a commitment to City of Missouri City, and we have maybe a certain amount of money that's allocated from us, you know, for that, how long does it take for that, that to, that to take place?
Usually a project of that nature, and I'll just give an example because Marcus shared that Watts Plantation, that's as a planet, project that have been planning for about five years. A, we're looking at the existing roadway. Usually the, the hurdle or the, where it's delayed is in the right-of-way acquisition. We have a dedicated right-of-way, we have two lane and want to go to three lane. If there's a dedicated right-of-way and funding is appropriated for the project, we can go like that. But more often, we are looking for right-of-way or land to do the widening of the project. But to answer your specific questions, projects of that nature usually take about five years to implement.
Five years?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Shashi. And I think, you know, if there are any other questions you can ask, but I do have something for the commissioners. I think I wanna thank Councilmember Boni, Councilmember Emery and Councilmember Marulus for talking about this. And it took a little while to bring this up. And I know that your, you know, your commissioners change, city council can change, so there's all of this. But given the fact that this joint meeting is here today, as a commissioner, what would you like to see from staff and council? That's not a loaded question, but it, it's just a friendly, is there some things that we can improve? There are some things that staff can improve to make your jobs easier. Make your, not to make your decisions, but on the things that you're doing, is there anything that we can do? Yes, sir. Turn on, turn on, turn on the microphone. No, no, turn on.
Yeah, so Mr. Shashi explained about the infrastructure. So infrastructure also, Mr. Owens also explained. So infrastructure is very important. If you look at, you know, what you brought it up, the, just not at the roads and mobility, but also the infrastructure, if there is any sewer available or if there is any mud district is, is there. So all the infrastructure is, is most important part of when you take a project up. And on the other hand, I was also looking at is the best practices around the three cities that we have. Sugar Land, Stafford and other cities. See how, you know, Sugar Land is completely developed. So is Stafford, pretty much. So we, you know, we have the only person on the south that all the development is done. And, and so we have to also, like you brought it up, point the mayor about the Fordman County. You know, they had this mobility and infrastructure, the bond money. So those are the areas that we should go into. That's what if that is included in our planning, then that would help us.
Well, thank you. Anyone else?
Knowing the pulse of the direction, the vision's important. I mean, we're gonna hear it from Jennifer in the comprehensive plan. What, how do you see the city moving forward in the next year, two year, five year? So when we have these things in front of us, we know the pulse of council. We can ask the right questions during our meeting to help facilitate solutions for your meeting.
And I know that you just would agree that we can't have a meeting to have a meeting to talk about stuff because of the legalities. But I think, you know, and I wrote it down, you know, as a question, but I don't think I'm gonna ask that to y'all. How often should we meet like this where, you know, you're hearing it from council, their vision? And I'm sure as to, you know, we just talked about the comprehensive plan, right? Update of that comprehensive plan will give you an idea of where the direction of that city council is looking at. So, I mean, I don't know, city manager, to way to look at that, if we can, you know, obviously we won't be able to meet based on, you know, they're representing the citizens of Missouri City on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Then ultimately comes to city council. But what I hear from cities residents are, you know, planning and zoning members said that it wouldn't matter, it wouldn't matter, it's gonna go to council as the final authority anyway. So that hurts me because of the reason is that, that, that whole pressure comes to us. But, you know, I look at the, I've served on parks board before. So one of my, I guess the roles that I saw was, you know, it's like a two round, right? Round one is with P and Z. And hopefully you have all your, all the tools that you have in front of you to make those decisions. If not, you have Public Works, you know, Infrastructure Utilities, ED, Legal. You got all these team that's there to answer that. And then to Councilmember Boni's point, some of us do watch y'all meetings. If not, the resident will share it with us. But then we go to round two. So I, I mean, I don't have a problem with going to round two. I don't think, I mean, you know, we went to the city, you know, citizens and told us to elect us in these positions. But I also understand that we have to represent the, the city, you know, overall. So kinda need some kinda help. I mean, I, I'm not sure how you mix the both. I mean, Jennifer, I mean, you know, planning and zoning, when we come there, if we sign up to speak on a public comment, but other than that, I mean, you know, we're watching it through that, right? So how would you, how would this correlation work?
Let me take a stab at this, because there's no, there is no ironclad way to go about this. I think tonight's meeting hopefully generated enough gaps that staff needs to go back and address. The way that I've always looked at this is you have staff that, that are the professional experts. And then you have the planning and zoning is the next level that, that has more intimate knowledge and detailed understanding of where the city is as it relates to comprehensive plan and zoning. And then the next level is, of course, council at the policy level. So in order for that to work the way you want it to work, they all have to be knowledgeable of what one is doing and what the role is of one entity versus another. And ensure that we're updating and getting that information back to all the stakeholders so they know where we are. So I think what is happening, or what has happened, is because of such demand, and whether that's because other cities are built out or we have strategic location here in Missouri City being close to Houston. Whatever that's, whatever that is, we haven't kept up with the changes. And, and we haven't set the vision in terms of where we wanna go, how we wanna grow, and what that looks like. So we're in a reactionary mode. So I think what I've heard and what staff is working on is identifying all those gaps that we've heard. And then we will present that back to council. We will also are initiating the comprehensive plan where we will have all stakeholders involved in that process. Not just council and planning and zoning, but our residents, our businesses, everyone that's a stakeholder in our community to feed into that. And then hopefully, at least annually, I would hope that this body would get back together to review where we are, assess what we're doing, determine if it's, if it's moving us where we wanna go or not, and then figure out how we do it. But I think that's definitely how we need to go about this.
Thank you. Any of our appointed officials?
Sure. My recommendation would be that perhaps at the beginning of every year, the staff can present to the Planning and Zoning Commission the city council's established goals, the strategic goals for whatever that cycle is. But I think the most important thing, which has been mentioned several times here and in previous meetings, is that comprehensive plan. That really is the guidebook for everything that the Planning and Zoning Commission does, as well as the city council. So I think prioritizing that, updating that, and ensuring that it remains a living document versus kind of something that, not that it's not living, but not as reflective of what the, the changing conditions are. I think that would, would definitely help in terms of keeping both bodies in line.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Sorry, just a couple of things. Question, the stuff that we brought up here today about gaps, where do we go from here? Is that something staff will, we'll see something from staff in the future?
Yes, yes.
Okay, got it. All right. And then the last thing is, I'll, I'll turn the question back to you, which is, are you expecting or is council expecting planning and zoning to be more proactive? I would have expected kinda come, somebody come back at me when I said there's some property that probably may be rezoned. I says, great, give us a list. Is that, are there things that you're looking for, for P and Z to more, be more proactive as opposed to coming to our monthly meeting and getting a, yours that we talked about today? Should we be providing more, more input on that?
I mean, you know, there's seven of us here. I'm only one vote, right? For me, I, I, you know, you heard it. Thank you all for your hard work, you know, what you do. There are tough decisions that is before you to make, and same thing before the seven of us to make. You know, I would only ask of you is, you know, try to get as much, much as information as possible from the staff. If, if, you know, some of the things that I've asked recently to that, you know, when we were talking about this joint meeting is, are there staff areas that within the city departments, are they represented when we have these meetings? I'm not talking about, especially in public hearing settings, right? Like, you know, things that come up. So that way that, you know, you're comfortable, whether it's staff recommendation is no and you voting yes, or majority voted no, and then, you know, staff recommended yes. It doesn't matter how it goes. But I just wanted to make sure from this meeting that, that you have the tools. Is there a lack, if, if there are things lacking? And I think, you know, you can go to the staff and let them know that we don't have this information in front of us to vote on it tonight or, or what have you. And those are things that I would think as a commissioner that I would be comfortable doing. I'm just speaking for myself. I'll open to Mayor Protem and my colleagues to state, you know, to answer that question.
I would just say, as you, you know, the saying, if you see something, say something. But as you're, you know, in the midst of doing your job as a commissioner, if you are experiencing something or see something that is a gap or that you feel we could do better or we need to improve, sorry, we can improve on, then it would be beneficial for you to, to email Jennifer or staff and let them know so that they can pass that information along to us. That's very critical now, seeing that we're talking about, you know, the, the updating of our comprehensive plan and how we move forward. But your suggestions are all needed and welcome for us to make a solid decision as we develop the comprehensive plan.
Anybody else?
Yeah. What I'd say is, you know, the way I look at P and Z and, and the results that they bring back to the council is that, and I'll speak for myself. I look personally that P and Z is looking at a lot more in-depth detail of what the project might be so that it keeps the council from having to get down into the weeds and doing a lot of the, the investigation for, you know, for the technical aspects of a project. And that's not only P and Z, but also from staff. So, you know, I don't, I don't mind getting into the weeds if I have to, but it's a lot easier if we've got a real solid response from the city and from P and Z to help us, to help me make the decision that I think's best for Missouri City. So, you know, I guess I'm saying, you know, keep up the diligent work that you're doing and continue to provide us with solid information that we can make an informed decision on.
But if you have a list of, of places that you've seen, please provide that, because clearly you have it. Or you've seen it, so.
And I'll always say this to you too, that, you know, what I find is emotional voting is the worst voting, right? Because you are now going off of the emotions that's in front of you. But collectively, if you like to Councilmember Emery's point, you know, the vetting process, if you will, right? And that's all being done, and there's a reason. Because recently I looked, I tried to look at the minutes of why something that you guys voted for or voted against, because I wanted to understand from the minutes perspective. So there are those things that we, each of us individually do to understand what's going on, or if not, go back and watch the video, right? But I would wanna think that, you know, everyone can make voting, you know, based on what's in front of them and what they studied and what they did their homework and asked the questions versus rather than just an emotional, because then you're taking away from the comprehensive plan and everything that we just talked about, right? So it has to be what fits, it has to be what works. And that's why I've asked that question. Do you all feel like you have absolutely the tools to do your job? Which is, you know, are staffs available? Are they providing those information to make those right decisions that you? I know they're sitting in the room, you may not wanna answer. But this is where, this is where we can only look forward to improve ourselves, right? You know, so that's all, that's the reason I ask. And I always say the collective decision for me is, as long as I thought through everything and I said each of us has one vote and you do too, but as long as we're putting pros and cons and what if, and what if not in front of us to say, what is the future of Missouri City? And if it aligns with the comprehensive plan, and if you have a question on the comprehensive plan, please do so to ask the staff. But if you, you know, but if you understand it, sometimes I'm, I make sure that, you know, I wanted to make sure that if, are people voting, are they understanding what this was? Or are they not understanding what this was? It's something that I don't ask others of how they vote. But it's something that boggles me when I see it, you know, I'm thinking. But, and I know that it happens, and, but, you know, you gotta do the best information. Only thing I rely on staff is to provide the tools, that I have the tools. Go ahead.
Speaking of tools, I just wanted to check in. Staff, we initiated a development assessment form that summarizes all the disciplines on any project coming before the planning and zoning, which would include utilities, traffic, economic development, zoning, you name it. Is there something else that could be a part of that, that we're not providing that will be helpful to you in doing your job?
Come on, James, you think.
Can we get back to you on that?
My final thoughts would just be to tell, tell you guys thank y'all very much for the stuff that y'all do. The information that you guys receive from our staff. And I know sometimes it is hard not to make an emotional decision, but I definitely appreciate you guys being objective and making sure that y'all reviewed all of the content, the details, asked all the questions. Unlike Councilmember Boni, I don't watch them. I have a television at home. But I do go back and read the minutes, because that for me just tells me a lot. Because I don't have to look at the facial expressions and see, I get to look at the actual factual details that you guys are making your decisions on. And me personally, I depend on y'all's recommendation, whether it's for or against. And I take that all into consideration when I'm making decisions. And so I don't wanna get into the weeds. I like the fact that you guys are the weed eaters and that y'all take care of that part for us. But I just wanna reinforce how much we do, and myself personally, depend on the information that you guys are vetting and asking all the tough questions, as well as the suggestions and the recommendations. And I appreciate what you guys are doing. And thank you so much. So make sure y'all come to every, every meeting every month and stuff and make y'all's notes, because I do appreciate that and I do depend on that. And I'm able to give back feedback to the community when you guys do your stuff. It does impact what I'm able to do. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? Anyone? Staff, council, commissioners? Well, Bob, you didn't say anything. I made a note of that. No, I'm just kidding. No, thank you all for your time. Seriously, appreciate it. And I think this is a step one, and I think we'll move forward with it. Anytime you feel like you wanna have a meeting with the council, please let the staff know and they can set that meetings up. And we'll do the vice versa and we'll make sure that we continue this path forward. Okay? All right, thank you. Item number five. Item number five, we're closed.
Mayor, if I may, I just want to thank the residents, I see just a few. But thank y'all for coming out tonight and expressing y'all's opinions. And hopefully, y'all were able to sit in on this and learn something additional. And you could walk away with some additional knowledge. So I just wanted to say thank y'all for coming out.
All right, thank you. We do have an item five, which is a closed executive session. Item which is five B, Texas Government Code, Section 551.074. So we will be going back and we'll come back out. Thank you all, thank you. All right, the time is eight eleven PM. Now the city council is back into the, the City Council and Planning and Zoning Commission Joint Special Meeting and hearing with no further business and hearing no objections, the meeting is adjourned at eight eleven PM. Before y'all run off, we have a, take a quick picture, if you don't mind. So we have something cool here, so we got this glass.